All right, good evening. We're gonna get started now. I'd like to welcome you to this public hearing of the New York City Rent Guidelines Board, and thank you for attending. This is the first of five public hearings to consider comments concerning proposed rent adjustments for leases for apartments, lofts, hotels, and other housing units submitted to the Rent Stabilization Law of 1969 and the Emergency Tenant Protection Act of 1974. These adjustments will affect leases commencing between October 1, 2025, and September 30, 2026. I will now take roll call. Please respond if present. Genesis Aquino. Alec Armlovich. Robert Erlich.
Present.
Harpit Gupta.
Present.
Reed Jordan.
Present.
Alec Schwartz.
Present.
Christina Smith.
Present.
Adan Soltran.
Present.
Doug Apple. I'm indeed present. Let the record show we have a quorum. The next four meetings of this board will be public hearings to comment on the proposed guidelines for the following dates and times. June 9 at the Theater at City Tech, New York City College of Technology, 275 J Street in Brooklyn, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. June 12 in the main theater of Ostos Community College, 450 Grand Concourse in the Bronx, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. June 17 at Symphony Space, 2537 Broadway, at 95th Street in Manhattan, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. June 27, New York City Department of Health, 125 Worth, Second Floor Auditorium, from 10:00 to 12:00, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Anyone who wants to comment to the proposed guidelines in a public hearing must sign up to speak. People wishing to speak at the public hearing can preregister in advance either through our website, nyc.gov/RGB, or by calling 212-669-7480 from 9:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday. Pre-registration ends at noon on the business day prior to each hearing. For those who do not preregister for the hearings, registration is also available at public hearings from 5:00 to 8:00 on June 9, 12, and 17, and from 10:00 to 12:00 on June 27. All of our public hearings will be livestreamed, and Spanish interpretation provided at each hearing. We also accept comments on the proposed guidelines outside of our public hearings. You can submit written, audio, and video comments for the board to review through June 27. Instructions on how to submit these comments will be available on the board's website. Sorry. I mean, to speak loudly.
It's working up just because it's loud.
I see. Okay, thank you. Can't hear out there?
No.
Oh, over the YouTube. Got it. You can accept comments. We would need to accept comments. Our final vote on the guideline will take place on Monday, June 30, starting at 7:00 p.m. at El Museo del Barrio, 1230 Fifth Avenue at 104th Street. The public may attend in person or may watch the vote live by streaming it on the RGB YouTube channel. To find out how, visit the RGB website or call RGB. Before we proceed, I'd like to go over the rules and procedures for those who are testifying before the board. If you wish to speak, you must confirm with RGB staff at the registration table located near the entrance of the hall. Speakers will not be called if they have not checked in at the registration table. There are Spanish interpreters here today. If you're ready to speak, please notify the staff you'd like an interpreter. I will try to call several names in advance to let you know that we will soon be called to speak. If you have materials to distribute to the board, please give them to the RGB staff sitting at the sign-in table near the entrance. I will attempt to alternate speakers between tenants and owners, but this may not always be possible. In order to accommodate as many speakers as possible, each speaker will have two minutes to give their testimony. Additional two minutes of speaking time will be given to those speakers utilizing interpretation services. To help speakers keep track of time, we have a clock. We'll start the clock when you begin speaking. The clock will beep once when the speaker has 30 seconds left, and continue beeping when the allotted two minutes are up. If you are still speaking at the end of two minutes, I will respectfully ask you to wrap up your testimony. We expect many speakers, and the board wants to hear from as many of you as possible in the limited time we have for this hearing. We understand that it may be difficult to say everything you want us to hear in just two minutes, but please understand it is our responsibility to try to make sure that everyone who has taken the time to come here and testify will have a fair opportunity to be heard. Thank you for your cooperation, and the board is looking forward to hearing your comments regarding the proposed rent adjustments. And now, we're gonna do that in Spanish.
Muy buenas tardes. Muy buenas tardes con todos. Me gustaría darles la bienvenida a esta audiencia pública de la Junta de Normas de Alquiler de Nueva York. Esta es la primera de las cinco audiencias públicas que tomarán en consideración sus comentarios sobre los ajustes de alquiler propuestos para la renovación de contratos de alquiler de apartamentos, lofts, o altillos, hoteles, y otras unidades de viviendas sujetos a la Ley de Estabilización de Alquileres de 1969 y la Ley de Urgencia de Protección de Inquilinos de 1974. Estos ajustes afectarán la renovación de contratos de alquiler a partir del 1 de octubre de 2025 hasta el 30 de septiembre de 2026. Bien, ahora pasaré lista. Por favor, responda si está presente. Genesis Aquino, presente. Alex Armlovich, presente. Robert Erlich, presente. Harpit Gupta, presente. Reed Jordan, presente. Alex Schwartz, presente. Christina Smith, presente. Adan Soltran, presente. Doug Apple, presente. Que conste en actas que hemos logrado un quorum. Las cuatro próximas reuniones de esta junta serán audiencias públicas para comentar sobre las normas propuestas, y se celebrarán en las fechas y horas siguientes. El lunes 9 de junio en el City Tech Theater del New York City College of Technology ubicado en el 275 de la calle J en Brooklyn, de 5 a 8 de la noche. El jueves 12 de junio en el Main Theater del Ostos Community College ubicado en el 450 del Grand Concourse en el Bronx, de 5 a 8 de la noche. El martes 17 de junio en el Symphony Space ubicado en el 2537 de Broadway, calle 95 en Manhattan, de 5 a 8 de la noche. Y luego, el viernes 27 de junio en el salón del New York City Department of Health ubicado en el 125 de la calle Worth, segundo piso, en Manhattan, de 10 a 12 del mediodía. Todo aquel que desee comentar sobre las normas propuestas en una audiencia pública deberá inscribirse para declarar, y los que deseen declarar en las audiencias públicas podrán preinscribirse con atelación. Pueden preinscribirse en línea a través de nuestra página, nyc.gov/RGB, o al llamar al 212-669-7480, de 9 a 5 de la tarde, de lunes a viernes. Esta preinscripción finalizará al mediodía del día laborable anterior a cada audiencia. Quienes no se preinscriban para las audiencias aún podrán preinscribirse en las audiencias públicas de 5 a 8 de la noche el 9, 12, y 17 de junio, de 10 a 12 del mediodía el 27 de junio. Ahora, todas las audiencias públicas se transmitarán en directo por internet, y habrá interpretación en español en cada audiencia. También recibiremos comentarios sobre las normas propuestas fuera de nuestras audiencias públicas. Podrán presentar comentarios por escrito, audio, o vídeo a la junta hasta el 27 de junio, y las instrucciones para presentar estos comentarios estarán disponibles en el sitio web de la junta, en nyc.gov/RGB, y por correo electrónico a ask@rgb.nyc.gov, o al llamar a la junta RGB al 212-669-7480. Nuestra votación final sobre las normas se llevará a cabo el lunes 30 de junio a partir de las 7 de la noche en el museo del barrio en el 1230 de la Quinta Avenida, en la calle 104 en Manhattan. Si no podrán asistir en persona, se podrá seguir la votación a través de la transmisión en directo en el canal de YouTube de la RGB. Para informarse de cómo hacerlo, visite la página web de la RGB, nyc.gov, o llame a la RGB al 212-669-7480, entre las 9 de la mañana y las 5 de la tarde. Antes de continuar con los testimonios, me gustaría repasar las normas y procedimientos para quienes declaren ante la junta. Si desean declarar, deberán confirmar su presencia con el personal de la RGB en la mesa de inscripción situada cerca de la entrada de este salón. No se llamarán a aquellos que no se hayan inscrito con el personal de la mesa de inscripción. Habrá intérpretes de español. Cuando se inscriban para hablar, notifíquenle al personal si desean intérprete. Intentaré anunciar varios nombres con atelación para que sepan que pronto se les llamará para declarar. Si tienen material que desean distribuirle a la junta, deberán entregarlo al personal de la RGB que se encuentra en la mesa de inscripción cerca de la entrada. Intentaré alternar entre inquilinos y propietarios para que ambos puedan declarar, pero cabe señalar que esto no siempre será posible. Para darle cabida al mayor número posible de declarantes, cada uno dispondrá de dos minutos para declarar. Se consideran dos minutos adicionales a los declarantes que utilicen servicios de interpretación. Y para ayudar a los declarantes a controlar su tiempo, dispondremos de un temporizador. Lo pondremos en marcha una vez que el declarante empiece a dar su testimonio. El temporizador sonará una vez que los declarantes les queden 30 segundos, y este seguirá sonando cuando se hayan agotado los dos minutos asignados. Si los declarantes siguen hablando después de los dos minutos, les pediremos que concluyan rápidamente su declaración. Esperamos que haya muchos declarantes esta noche. Entre ustedes y la junta desea escuchar al mayor número posible en el tiempo limitado al que disponemos para esta audiencia. Entendemos que puede ser difícil decir todo lo que quieran que oigamos en apenas dos minutos, pero por favor entiendan que es nuestra responsabilidad asegurarnos de que todos los que se hayan tomado el tiempo de venir aquí y declarar tengan la oportunidad de que se les escuche. Muchas gracias por su colaboración. La junta desea verdaderamente escuchar sus comentarios sobre las normas propuestas para el ajuste de los alquileres. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much. We'll now call speakers. I'm gonna start with Anne Korchak. Anne, if you can come up to the microphone. And then after Anne, we have Alexander Kuavsky and Musa Jamzhead.
Good evening. My family's been operating housing since 1941, so we know that there's always good years and bad years. But the plain truth is that the majority of the housing in this city operates as a business, and it has real expenses, and rent is how we cover those expenses. While many tenants testify passionately about affordability, and I hear them, I must speak to the reality of operating 125-year-old housing. It's not cheap. We had to take on a project unexpectedly recently to accommodate the new DSNY bins. And it's expensive to bring any contractor into Manhattan these days to do any work. It cost us $5,700 to do some concrete and masonry work in the front of the building to accommodate these new bins. It was unexpected and unplanned, and it occurred at the same time that our insurance renewal came up, which required us to pay our three-year premium upfront, and our biannual property taxes were also due. So this was obviously very difficult for us to manage on a cash flow basis, so luckily the contractor who we've used for many years and we have a nice relationship with waited close to 60 days for us to pay him the $5,700. So, you know, that's the real reality that many owners are facing monthly. You know, and the city's war on rats has costs associated with that. You know, I would just also like to add that, you know, in a post-HSTPA world, the work that you all have to do is more and more important. I know you're in an impossible situation, but I would just ask you, you know, you heard all the testimony. I heard the term death spiral. You know, the financial health of these buildings is really in your hands, and it's not just the financial health of the building, it's, you know, all the tenants that live in these buildings too. So thanks for your attention.
Thank you. Alexander Kuavsky. Get that right. If you could be closer to the microphone, it's a little hard to hear.
Yeah, how's this? This is good?
Yes, thank you.
I get an extra seven seconds. Good evening, everyone. My name is Alexander Kurovsky. I'm a rent stabilized tenant, have been for the last 14 years. I come to you today because I had a terrible, senseless tragedy occur in the comfort of my own home. My firstborn child, Benyamin Zaharia Kurovsky, died tragically. We had a steam radiator sporadically explode, our valve snapped, and all of the steam that was supposed to go through the pipe and pump through the radiator ended up entering Benyamin's bedroom. Benyamin lived like a king. He was about to celebrate his first-year birthday. The tragedy happened eight days before his one-year birthday party. We had a venue, we had our budget allocated, we even had a birthday outfit picked out. This was a terrible, senseless tragedy. I come today not just for your sympathy and compassion, which I am very thankful for, but also because we think that it's really important to have radiators inspected. As of now, boilers are looked at annually. Every single building owner knows this, right? The boilers are looked at every single year, but when it comes to the radiators, they are essentially never touched, never looked at, and no one really bats an eye. A lot of questions that we get seem to always correspond to, well, did you leave your child next to it? Could it be that if there was perhaps some kind of a cover, maybe if there was a radiator cover, maybe he would have survived? The answer is no. The valve snapped, and no radiator cover would have done a single thing. Our goal is to spread awareness, and this is not an anti-landlord thing, this is a child's safety first thing. Our goal is to ensure that radiators are inspected annually, particularly for homes, residences, apartments, but especially pre-war buildings with children that are ages six and under. Thank you.
Thank you. Musa Jamzhead. Musa, are you here? We'll hold Musa till later. Are there any other individuals who want to testify? Because right now I don't have any slips. Just to remind, if you want to testify, just be sure to preregister outside, and then you're welcome to come in and testify. Do we know if there's folks outside? Yeah. We'll wait one minute, see if there's folks gonna come in. Otherwise, we may take a break for a few minutes until there are more folks who want to testify. We'll take a couple-minute break, and if folks want to come in, and testify will be here for them. So we'll take like a 10-minute break. So, thank you all.
Tomaremos un descanso de 10 minutos. Muchas gracias.
Sunscreen, check. Sunglasses, check. Stylish furniture, check. Summer is finally here. Let Bob's Discount Furniture help you make the most of the season with the hottest styles for every room in your home. Shop Bob's latest selection of feature-packed power sofas, Consumer Reports recommended mattresses, beautiful bedrooms, and even more delightful designs, all at everyday low prices and delivered on time. Oh my Bob! So stop in or visit mybobs.com and make this summer your most stylish yet.
...
At Toyota Service Centers, you can count on genuine parts and certified technicians.
Okay Brian, it needs to be the end. Um, we're just gonna start. We have some folks in time to speak, so give us two minutes. Vamos a empezar. Empezaremos. Okay. I think we're gonna get started. We have some speakers that have signed up. We want to give everybody a chance to speak. So I'm gonna call a few names to get us started. Sean Connolly. Sam Lee. Leonardo Ralles. Any of you in the room right now? Sean, Sam, or Leonardo. Alright, we'll hold those. Let's see if we get some others. Haxel Sanchez. Maybe they're all outside still. Mark Brudzinski. Yeah, I guess they're outside. Yoshi C, letter C, Yoshi. No Yoshi. Teresa Evangelista. I think they're all outside. And Lucia Parades. No. Hopefully they'll come in shortly and we can start. Anybody who's here who'd like to speak, just please sign up and we'll let you come right up. What's your name ma'am?
My name is Alexis Foot.
Did you sign?
I did sign it.
You did? Then, come on up. You're here.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you ma'am.
Thank you so much. Dear Rent Guideline Boards members, we the residents of Far Rockaway demand that the RGB decrease rent and we demand a rent freeze. My neighbors and I need the rent freeze to be able to provide for our families, pay bills, and have room to save money. Families and single adults are having a challenging time paying the rent in Auburn View. I live in Far Rockaway in Auburn View and the development is owned by L&amp;M and Bluestone Triangle Equity. View due to market value rent that has been set by HPD in New York City. As I join the Med Council, the Med Housing Council and over 130 organizations here today to demand the RGB do... I'm sorry, give me a minute. Please request the rent freeze. Due to the housing policies created by Michael Bloomberg and Rudy Giuliani, developers who create luxury housing under the affordable housing name, camouflage luxury housing under affordable housing name, average families will not be able to afford $4,000 in rent when they're trying to pay daycare, metro cards. You get it. All of the things. New York City needs to start becoming more innovative in the ways that they provide housing and homeownership for working-class New Yorkers. I work at one of the most prestigious hospitals in New York City and every day I hear my nurses complaining about how they wish they could afford a home. Or how the rent is too high. These people risk their lives every day to take care of sick patients and make sure that their families are well taken care of as well. If you do not, if you do not freeze the rent, you are going to make thousands of families and senior citizens homeless and young adults will become homeless, which means the trains and the shelters will be overpacked. I have been living in the, I have been living in New York City my whole life and it is heartbreaking to hear my friends and families express fears of being homeless or displaced. The city of New York owes families of minds of color reparations. Freezing the rent would be a form of providing reparations for descendants of Africans enslaved in this country and city. Wall Street saw slaves and now the ancestors of these slaves are coming for what we are owed.
Thank you ma'am. Anybody else who's signed up to speak already that's in the room? We have a list, but they may not be in here right now. Okay. Is there anybody who's signed up here to speak? We have some names, but they haven't been in yet. Is there any... Just want to... If anybody is in here and has signed up, we'd be happy to have you speak.
Si hay personas acá que ya se han apuntado para declarar, podríamos empezar con ustedes, pero claro, tendrían que haberse apuntado en la mesa de inscripción afuera. Pero podemos empezar.
If there's anybody who's signed up to speak and would like to announce themselves, because we do have a list of names. I can go through them again, but if you've actually signed up already, raise your hand, tell me who you are and we'll get you up to speak.
Si hay alguien que ya se haya apuntado para hablar, por favor díganos su nombre. Tenemos una lista, pero si quiere ofrecer su nombre, háganos saber quién es y puede declarar.
Hi, my name is Musa Jamshed. I'm on the list. Can you just make sure that you have me there?
Yep, you're all set, please. Proceed, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Musa Jamshed and I am a tenant in Woodside and an organizer with the Party for Socialism and Liberation. Thank you. I was born and raised in a rental on the east side of Manhattan, but like many New Yorkers, I could never afford to live in the neighborhood that I grew up in. Because we live under a corrupt capitalist system where the only thing that is stabilized is the profit, greed, and luxury of landlords. These lords who control the completely undemocratic and corrupt Rent Guidelines Board average $300,000 every year in profit from 45 units in Queens. Meanwhile, we cannot dream to own one single unit. And almost half of us hand over 30% of our hard-earned paychecks to cover our rent. Even more. These greedy elites think that we are lesser than them, but it's tenants like us that make this city run. Without us, they have nothing. Now unfortunately, it is not enough to simply know that we are enough and to rage against these so-called lords. And we certainly will not be begging them for scraps. We must know our power. We must organize the 9 million tenants of New York to take back our city and guarantee affordable, community-owned housing for all. We demand tenant control of housing policy and real rent control based on a reasonable percentage of our incomes, not the parasitic private market. So organize, join us. We have organizing meetings every Saturday at noon in Woodside for the Party for Socialism and Liberation. And join me. When I say "tenant," you say "power." Tenant! 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 May it be an evening full of very powerful speeches. Let's make some noise for ourselves.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry.
Hello, I can go next. My name is Leonardo Rawales.
Did you sign up, sir?
Yes, I signed up.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we have you, yep.
Okay.
And then we'll go back to the order after this.
Buenas tardes, vecinos y vecinas. ¿Cómo estamos? Aquí en la lucha. Mi nombre es Leonardo.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Leonardo.
Soy maestro de escuela.
I'm a schoolteacher.
Y estamos acá como parte del Partido por Socialismo y Liberación.
And we're here for the Party for Socialism and Liberation.
Estamos aquí para denunciar las alzas injustas de la renta.
We are here to denounce the increases that are illegal in rent.
Y para denunciar la corrupción de esta mesa.
And to also denounce the corruption that is at this table today.
Porque nosotros, los residentes en Queens, no elegimos a ninguna de las personas que están sentados al frente de nosotros.
Because of course, we, citizens of here of Queens, did not elect any of the people that are part of this board.
Fueron puestas por el alcalde y ellos mismos se benefician directamente de las leyes que aprueban.
They were sat there by the... They were appointed by, of course, the mayor and they themselves benefit from the laws that exist.
Vecinos y vecinas, ellos no nos representan.
My fellow neighbors, they do not represent us.
Como sabemos, venimos cada año aquí y hacen lo mismo, aumentan la renta y los dueños de los edificios se llenan de dinero a sus bolsillos.
As we know, we come here every year and they increase their rents and of course, the landlords line their pockets with money.
Mientras nuestras condiciones de vida empeoran.
While our life conditions worsen.
Pero vecinos y vecinas, nosotros, los inquilinos, tenemos poder. Un poder colectivo.
But my dear neighbors, we have power. We have collective power.
Podemos cambiar este sistema, este sistema corrupto.
We can change the system, this corrupt system.
Que no es democrático.
Which is not democratic.
Nos están haciendo a todos la vida imposible.
They are making our life impossible.
Porque todos tenemos derecho, derecho a una vivienda digna, una vida digna.
Because of course, we all have the right, the right to a home and also a right-to-worthy life.
Sin tener que trabajar dos trabajos o más de 12 horas solo para pagar la renta o los servicios básicos.
Without having to work two jobs or more than 12 hours to pay for basic needs or for rent.
Cada mes sentimos la presión por la inflación.
Each month, we feel the pressure because of inflation.
Por las facturas de luz, gas, y otros servicios básicos.
Because of all the basic services, including utilities.
La realidad es que vivir en Nueva York es imposible, ¿verdad?
The reality is that living in New York is impossible, right?
Los dueños de los edificios siguen explotándonos.
Homeowners continue to exploit us.
No hacen las reparaciones.
They don't make any of the repairs.
No arreglan los elevadores.
They don't correct or fix the elevators.
No necesitamos más aumentos de renta. Lo que necesitamos son rentas bajas.
We don't need any more increases. We need low rent.
Un sistema que de verdad no represente a todos vecinos y vecinas.
A system that truly represents all of us, my dear neighbors.
Y tenemos que seguir organizándonos. Tenemos que luchar juntos.
And we need to continue organizing. We need to fight together.
Para transformar a este sistema corrupto.
So that we can transform this corrupt system.
Construyamos entonces, vecinos y vecinas, un sistema con vivienda digna, un sistema que de verdad no represente.
So of course, my dear neighbors, let us continue to work together to build a system that does work for us where we have just... We have just rent for all of us.
Porque la vivienda es un derecho humano.
Because housing is a right.
Conéctese con nosotros. Venga a nuestras reuniones los días sábados en Woodside para organizar y seguir en la lucha.
Please reach out to us. Come out to Woodside and continue organizing with us.
Voy a hacer un canto, vecinos y vecinas. El canto es el siguiente. Voy a decir, cansados, ustedes dicen, no.
So I'm gonna... I'm actually gonna... A chant?
Sí.
Tired?
En la lucha del pueblo, nadie se cansa.
Should we continue fighting? Yes.
Cansados.
No.
Seguimos.
Sí.
En la lucha del pueblo, nadie se cansa. 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 Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Teresa Evangelista. I was on the list earlier. Oh, sure.
Hold on one second, if you don't mind.
No problem.
See if there's anybody, because there was other... Sean Connolly.
Hello, I'm here.
Teresa, we'll get to you. You're coming up, I promise.
Hello, my name is Sean. I'm a tenant attorney here in Jamaica, but I want to be clear, I'm not here as an attorney or for my employer. I'm here, again, as a proud member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. I want to direct my sta... Thank you very much. I'm actually gonna... I would like to direct my statements to the public members of the board because, you know, we know that the landlord representatives are corrupt. That's fine. And we know the tenant representatives are good people, but there's only two of you. So, you know, the public members... I know that you're supposed to represent public interest, right? And I think that some of you probably think that that's what you're doing. But I really would urge you, and I'm saying this with respect. I really would urge you to think about that, okay? I know you think that you're qualified to sit on that board because you went to fancy schools or something, and that's great. But all that actually qualifies you to do is to do the analysis, and that's fine. You do good studies, you could send out your reports. That's great. But none of that makes you qualified to represent the people in this room or to represent the tenants of New York City, okay? And I mean this genuinely. Every single tenant in this room who lives in a rent-stabilized apartment is more qualified to sit on that board than you all are. These are decisions that impact... fundamentally impact the lives of the tenants in New York City. There's a decision that should be made by a body that is representative of and accountable to the tenants of New York City. I think that's not actually a crazy thing to say. I think pretty much everyone agrees with that. So, you know... The Rent Guidelines Board should be abolished. Sorry to say that to you all, but I'm not sorry to say that in general. The Rent Guidelines Board should be abolished. It should be replaced by a body made up of tenants and representative of tenant interests. A body... A body that can set rents throughout the city at levels that tenants can actually afford. I also, I want to respect... I know everyone who's calling for a rent freeze. I think we also support that. But we need to also come together as tenants to organize, to get rid of this board completely and actually take power back for ourselves. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Sam Lee. Oh, sure.
Hello, good evening. My name is Sam and I have lived in Queens basically my whole life. My family and I have never had a stable housing because we're constantly priced out of our homes and looking for a more affordable place to live constantly. But we're still here. But we're still here. And I know my experience reflects the experience of many New Yorkers. A 2024 study found that for New Yorkers living in rent-stabilized apartments, almost half of them are rent burdened. We would all have to earn 134,000 a year for rent in New York to be considered affordable. That is outrageous. Almost half of the people in rent-stabilized apartments pay thirty percent or more of their income on rent each month. On top of that, we pay taxes, yet we have no say on how our money is being spent. We have to spend money on bus fares and train fares, groceries, utilities, and all of that prices is going up. Inflation is going up. All of that is going up. And then there's nothing left in our pockets. No one should be charged this much for shelter. It's inhumane. Housing is essential human right, one that the government should provide, protect, and guarantee for all its people. Rather than raising rent on working-class people, we should be taxing the Wall Street billionaires to fund quality public housing for everyone. The erosion of rent control and public housing and yearly rent hikes affects all of us. Being forced to move out again and again is causing a burden on me and my family. Eventually, I will not be able to afford to live in the city that I've known my whole life. Eventually, I will not be able to afford the rent that the city pays me to care and teach our children in our public schools. That the, to the board. Consider the future of the city and the people who live in it and what will happen to us when the rent burden becomes intolerable. To everyone else here who is a tenant, we need to organize, we need to mobilize to stop these rent hikes and evictions. We need to demand accountability against the landlords who violates our rights. Come talk to me or anyone who's with the Party for Socialism and Liberation if you're ready to fight back. Eric Adams and RGB do not, have shown us, they do not represent our interest. We have to unite and build a movement and secure our own rights and our own interests and fight for our rights and our homes and a fight for our future. Thank you. When I say tenant, you say power. Tenant! Tenant! When I say fight back, you say also fight back. Fight! We fight back!
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I just want to remind everybody a couple of the rules. Some of you were new and coming in. It's, we ask you to limit your speech to two minutes because we do have many speakers now. Signed up, we want to make sure everybody gets a chance before we're done. I'm gonna call a couple names.
Half the room can't understand. Can you please interpret? We have all my neighbors are here and they can't understand.
We, we will interpret when people get, that aren't able to speak in the mic. We'll do the interpretation of those. I'm gonna call a couple names. Axel Sanchez. I also would ask Mark Brudzinski, if he's here, to get ready to come up.
Hi.
And also Yoshi C. So those are the next two names. And I would ask you, ma'am, to, Ms. Sanchez, please.
Okay, so I won't start unless there's interpretation. So I want to secure that, is the, who's gonna interpret in Spanish? Because I'm gonna be speaking in English.
We have many, many speakers tonight, ma'am. I'm so sorry. But we really need to make sure we can hear everybody and do their speech. So I'd ask you to go ahead.
Let them hear.
They're not even speaking right now. Why does time still go?
You know what? That's okay. I know you guys are scared. I know you guys are scared. I'll give you that. My name is Axel. I was born in Elmhurst Hospital, where I also did my clinical rotation for my respiratory therapy degree. I grew up in Lefrak City and still live there. I am Queens and Queens is me. Richard S. Lefrak, the owner of Lefrak City, has a net worth of $2.6 billion. The median household income for all rent-stabilized tenants in New York City, including Lefrak, is $60,000 a year. Mr. Lefrak's financial success depends on the financial struggle of Lefrak City tenants. His wealth depends on the exploitation of thousands of tenants living in fear, just like you're feeling now, by the way, of eviction and homelessness. While Mr. Lefrak can own multiple homes, cars, and yachts, the tenants of Lefrak and all rent-stabilized tenants will struggle and many will fail to secure the one home they have. A study by the Gothamists showed that Lefrak City was the site of the most evictions in the city in 2023. This rent hike will produce more unhoused people, increase reliance on social services, which the federal administration has already made cuts to. This Rent Guidelines Board is shameful for using the suffering of the many for profit. But the tenants from New York City are courageous and we refuse, refuse to be pawns. We are the workers of the city. We built this city and we will never back down until we get what we deserve. Am I right? And also, you're gonna give me 20 seconds back because I was asking you for interpretation. Thank you. We have had enough of starving our own pockets to feed the greed of the modern-day robber barons. We say no to rent hikes and evictions. In fact, we demand that the rent of all tenants be reduced and capped. Tenants who came before us fought and struggled and won rent control. And we will continue to fight to defend it. The tenacity of the masses will always defeat the greed of the few. And if you expect that we will give up, I want you to look at this room and know that you've already lost.
Thank you, ma'am. Mark, Mark Brudzinski, followed by Yoshi C. And then Teresa, I know you're here. Teresa Evangelista is next. Sir, please proceed.
I'm glad you're here listening to us, even though we see the way this board is composed is fundamentally undemocratic. To give equal weight to landlords and tenants when tenants outnumber landlords by so much in this city. Our landlord doesn't even live in the city. Doesn't even operate from the city. It would be democratic to reflect the real proportion and have us select our own representatives. This is why you as a board have an extra responsibility to pay the most attention to what we, the people, need. In the case of my building, the RGB's past rent hikes have resulted in unaffordable rents for me and my neighbors despite unresolved problems of brown water coming out of the faucets. Our rents have gone up. The landlord corporation makes money. The building's problems are unsolved. The work that's done to keep the building up, the work that's done to keep the building up, we pay separately in the form of everlasting MCIs. So it's the responsibility of this board to reflect the reality of this city and raise the rent by zero percent until we can put a system in place that is fair.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna call up Yoshi C. And then Teresa, Teresa Evangelista, and Selena Delacroce. So please proceed, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Yoshi. I'm an organizer with the Party for Socialism and Liberation, a lifelong resident of Jamaica, Queens. And like many of us here, I live in a rent-stabilized unit. And like all New Yorkers, I have seen my rent continue to climb year after year. This is not my first time speaking out against another looming rent hike. It did not make sense then, it does not make sense now, that nine appointed people get to choose and decide whether or not the rent goes up for millions of tenants when year after year, tenants have demanded a rent rollback. The Coalition for the Homeless reported that over 110,000 people slept in a shelter every night in March. We know thousands more find shelter on the street. We see them, we walk past them every single day. That same month, your board released a report stating that landlords with rent-stabilized units saw their income increase by 12.1%. Now you can lie all you want and say that you need higher rents to maintain and repair our units. The fact of the matter is, as many will attest, you are not repairing our units. Many of us have to deal with mold, bedbugs, roaches, rats, plumbing and heating issues, and yet you still want to raise our rent. Why should landlords live in luxury, hoard thousands of empty units? Meanwhile, people are struggling to live in dignity and many of us are forced out on the street. I want to remind tenants here of our power. We are the reason why rent control and rent stabilization exist. We won rent freezes in 2015 and 2016. And we did that by doing this. Getting together, organizing, and fighting back against a corrupt Rent Guidelines Board. And I want to emphasize, it's not just this corrupt Rent Guidelines Board. It's the entire capitalist system that puts profit over the well-being of people. People should live in dignity, not, not have to do this every single year. Four years in a row, you have raised our rent. We are not here to beg. We are here to fight back. And we don't just want a rent freeze. We demand a rent rollback. Tenants should have full control of the Rent Guidelines Boards. We're the ones that should decide the fate of housing in New York City. Shame on you.
Thank you, ma'am. Teresa, Teresa Evangelista. I know she was here earlier.
Thanks to everyone who spoke up so far. I appreciate your energy. I'm gonna tell a story tonight. My name is Teresa. I'm here with the PSL, Party for Socialism and Liberation. I'm, I came here tonight to tell you a story about possibility and hope. There once was a city that, much like ours, was experiencing a housing crisis. They had a shortage of affordable housing. There were no, there were rents that were rising for years. After a housing emergency was finally declared, the city's Rent Guidelines Board voted to reduce rents by 15%. Yes! The Rent Guidelines Board voted to reduce rent by 15%. The city I'm talking about is called Kingston, New York. It's just two hours away from here. And this six to three vote happened in November 2022. I said this was a story about possibility. And this outcome could not have been possible without months of organizing and hard work by local tenant and activist organizations and by political groups who came together to learn about their rights and advocate for themselves at public hearings just like this one. The plot twist in my story is that the Kingston renters have yet to see a rent reduction. Who knows why? Because real estate companies have appealed the vote, prioritizing profits over people. The fight, but the story's not over. The fight for guaranteed affordable housing in Kingston and across this country continues. The moral of the story is, if we want housing to be enshrined as a human right and not a product to be sold or rented for profit, we need to fight for it together. We have to connect our struggles from Kingston to Queens and beyond to build a movement that will take on this corrupt and broken system. What do we want our story to be? A future of endless rent hikes, mass evictions, and homelessness? No! We want a future where every person is guaranteed a dignified home and where decisions about housing are made by and for tenants, not by RGB or Wall Street. If you want to build this future together, connect with me or anyone else in a red PSL t-shirt and join our fight. Thank you.
Thank you. Selena Delacroce. Lucia Parades on deck. And then Mario Golden. So Selena?
My name is Selena. I'm part of Tri-Continental Institute for Social Research, Party for Socialism and Liberation, and I'm a rent-stabilized tenant in Jackson Heights. I moved to my apartment this year after my previous landlord announced she would increase my rent by 70%. Seven zero. Yeah, and then she did. Rent is already high as it is and I cannot afford the increase being that you all are discussing and neither can my neighbors, many of whom are here. I thought that living in a rent-stabilized building would afford some stability, but the increases in rent are so high that it barely makes a difference. When people talk about Queens, they talk about how vibrant and diverse the community is. And those are the people you've heard from today. But that's the community that you're voting on displacing by increasing rent by such a high amount. Many of my neighbors have lived in the same apartment for 10, 20, 30, or more years. They're wonderful people and they're here today. Many of them are here today. Housing is a basic human right and no one should risk being forced out of their homes or into hardship so that landlords can line their pockets. According to the RGB's 2025 report, renter income in Queens decreased by 3.1% in 2023, but landlord's net operating income increased by 11.4%. So that means after, after all their expenses. And this, at the same time, 21% of tenants in rent-stabilized housing experienced food insecurity and the average number of New Yorkers in, in New York City homeless shelters increased by 8.6%. So my neighbor who's sitting back there was just saying, doesn't New York say it has a homelessness problem? Well, how should we fix it? Maybe it's not by increasing rent. Maybe it's by freezing rent. Maybe it's by giving people affordable housing and maybe it's by recognizing housing is a human right. Landlords and the people pushing these increases want us to think that this won't work, that we're just here and we're yapping and it won't matter and this is impossible and that if they don't increase our rent, everything will fall apart. But it's not true. And I work for a research institute that puts out studies, that looks at other countries and says, well, in this study, in this country, housing is enshrined as a human right in the Constitution. And this is a shame on our city and it's a shame on our country and it's a shame on this board. Housing is a human right and instead of increasing our rents by untenable amounts, I would deplore this board, and I'm wrapping up, but I would deplore this board to consider policies like making New York a rent-controlled city where landlords cannot charge more than 20% of tenants' household income or seize vacant, there's all these buildings that are just sitting there not doing anything and people are living on the streets and suffering. So for the other tenants here, if you want to make these kinds of policies a reality, you heard it already, people in the red shirts, Saturday meetings every, every Saturday at 12 o'clock in Woodside, 5814 Roosevelt Ave. But I really hope that you guys let your conscience speak and make a better decision.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Lucia Parades, Mario Golden, and then Jose Lopez. I want you to translate for Jose.
Okay, I got it. Good evening. My name is Lucia Parades and I work as a city council caseworker right here in Queens. I'm not here at the behest of my employer. I'm here in my own regard with the Party of Socialism and Liberation. Every day I meet seniors, disabled tenants, and working families barely hanging on, not because they're irresponsible, but because the city is becoming unlivable for the very people who built it. Rent hikes on stabilized apartments are not just unsustainable, but they're cruel. Rent regulation was meant to protect communities in flushing, but instead, we created a system where landlords hold more power than tenants. And year after year, the Rent Guidelines Board approves increases like clockwork, acting like a neutral body when in reality it serves the interests of landlords and the real estate lobby. Meanwhile, programs like SCREE, meant to protect low-income seniors, are so bureaucratic that fewer than 60% of eligible people are enrolled. They're blocked by paperwork and agencies that don't communicate. As of May 2025, the average rent in flushing is over $2,000 a month. Yet it's still the most affordable neighborhood in Queens? 24% of the national average and we call that affordable? No! Every year it's the same story. The rent goes up and tenants are told to deal with it. Enough. We need a new vision. One where housing is a right, not a privilege. We need a new vision, one where housing is a right, not a privilege. So I'm not just here to speak, I'm here to fight. I'm asking you to fight with me! To every tenant listening, organize, speak out, show up. Let's build a power together and demand a system that puts people over profit. Our need outweighs your greed. Let's fight for a New York City we deserve!
Thank you, ma'am. Jose Lopez? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mario Golden, I made my mistake. My mistake.
Hello?
Mr. Golden.
I'd like to make my statement in Spanish, if that's fine?
Good afternoon to everyone. My name is Mario. I'm 60 years old. I live with my husband in Elmhurst, Queens. We are both disabled. And our monthly budget-- is $2,600. Twenty-two hundred dollars. Of which 1,800 go to rent. Which leaves us with $400. Literally. To pay for the light bill. And we would not be able to make ends meet if it were not for the benefits that we have at the moment. Last year? We had to fight in order to protect ourselves. Because the owners of the apartment where we live-- increased the rent in the last three years. Thirty-six percent. It has been a very difficult struggle for us to be able to protect ourselves. Because aside from this, we live in a co-op. And we've found out that those of us that rent co-ops have no protection whatsoever. Because of course, the lobby for co-ops made sure to exclude people that protect themselves from rent increases in New York. How is it possible that you allow this to happen? How is it that you allow people to live in extreme squalor? How is that possible? I hope that you're not just a bunch of puppets. And that you're not just enabling crooks. Because you are forcing us to live in complete and abject poverty. And of course, ladies and gentlemen, I hope you don't fall asleep with my comment. The gentleman over there who's yawning at the moment. Because of course, this makes us feel as though you couldn't care less. What happens to millions of people in the city that live in these conditions? I hope that we will fight together, because all nine million people in this city have to work together. We need to make sure that we unite, so that we can put an end to this avalanche-- of greed. And so that we can create laws that will put an end to this abuse.
Jose Lopez? Jose Lopez? Followed by Brandon Morel. And Amanda Barretto. Jose?
If you don't bother, even though I see every single one of you don't even speak Spanish, and if you do, you're not bothering to give interpretation, I will give my testimony in Spanish. Compañeros y compañeras, inquilinos e inquilinas, luchadores sociales y organizaciones populares presentes, hoy les deseo a cada uno de ustedes una feliz tarde.
Colleagues, friends, families, peers, participating groups that are here, tenants, I wish you a good afternoon, good evening.
My name is Brandon Morel, and I'm a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. Nuestra organización es una organización anticapitalista, antirracista, y antipatriarcal, y la ocasión-- y la ocasión que nos junta hoy, que nos reúne hoy, no es placentera, ni conveniente, ni oportuna. A nosotros no queremos estar aquí, perder nuestro tiempo con una gente que no nos escucha, pero la ocasión llama esto.
We're an organization that's anti-racist, anti-communist, anti-capitalist--
No, anti-communist!
Anti-capitalist, sorry. And the reason we're united here tonight is not really-- we don't want to continue wasting our time over here, but we need to get together to fix this problem.
Exactly. The situation is marked by a permanent crisis that's happening in the city. Una crisis permanente está pasando en la ciudad de Nueva York, en donde el 46% de la gente que vive en apartamentos de renta estabilizada no puede hacer el próximo pago de la renta.
So we're living in a permanent crisis currently, and there's 46% of tenants that live in rent-stabilized apartments currently that cannot continue to pay with increases, they cannot continue in this situation.
Entonces, esta gente, ¿quiénes son? Son ancianos, discapacitados, mujeres solteras embarazadas, y sus hijos, los cuales están más cerca del desalojo que de la vivienda estable. Y yo le digo a ustedes, es una fucking vergüenza!
And who are they? They're the elderly, disabled people, they are single pregnant women who live with their children, and they are closer to eviction than they are to stability, and quite honestly, it's a fucking embarrassment.
This is a shame, my dear! Es una vergüenza! Una vergüenza, y le digo por qué. Porque este organismo, que supuestamente es popular y democrático, diseñado para representar los intereses de la gente, en realidad es un organismo opuesto! Diseñado por el alcalde, diseñado por los intereses de dueño de propiedad privada, y por los caseros.
And you should be ashamed. This is all just a matter of shame, and you should all be ashamed. This organization, which should be populist and democratic, and actually works against the interests-- you guys do the opposite. And it's also an organization that's just like a puppet of the mayor, and it basically just works against our interests.
Los inquilinos, inquilinas, inquilines, los luchadores sociales, y las organizaciones populares, demandamos cosas simples!
So, all tenants, all social justice workers and/or fighters or activists, what we're demanding is rent, something simple.
Demandamos un cese al cobro de la renta, demandamos un cese al desalojo, demandamos la expansión, reparación, e inversión de la vivienda social en Nueva York!
We're demanding for the rent not to increase, we are demanding for the rent to stop, we are demanding to stop evictions. We want repairs, we want investments, and in our housing situation.
Demandamos una última cosa, que es simple. Vamos a institucionalizar el derecho a la vivienda, el derecho a la vida, el derecho a la existencia digna! Porque esto es una vergüenza, y ustedes avergüenzan a la gente de Nueva York, a la gente latina, a la gente asiática, a la gente africana!
Thank you, ma'am.
We're only demanding one more simple thing. What we want is to institutionalize the right to a fair housing, the right to have dignity, to live with dignity and with pride. You should be ashamed of yourselves. You are just basically representing capitalist people, racist people, prejudiced people, and basically, other people's interests that doesn't include people of color, the people in the city, people from Africa, people from Latin America, people from Asia. And basically, I'm not gonna say thank you to you, I'm gonna say thank you to everyone that else is here that's present.
Thank you. Amanda Barretto? Amanda Barretto? Elba Lopez? And Anwar Kubakkar? Amanda, are you here? Oh, I think she's right here. Just to remind everybody, if you want to sign up, and you haven't yet signed up, please do so. We'll be closing the sign up by 8 o'clock. We'll go as long as we need to with anybody who's signed up, but you must sign up by 8 to speak.
Les pedimos que si no se han inscrito para las 8 de la noche, que lo hagan ya. Nos quedaremos tan tarde como sea necesario, pero por favor, tienen que apuntarse a partir de las-- or a más tardar, las 8 de la noche, por favor. Good evening, my name is Amanda Barretto.
Buenas tardes con todos, mi nombre es Amanda Barretto.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Amanda Barretto. And I live at 8805 171st Street in Jamaica. In a building with rent stabilized, that is rent stabilized. I'd like to let you know all of the difficulties that I'm going through at the moment.
Aló, aló? Podría contarles las dificultades que estoy atravesando.
I could tell you all of the hardship that I'm living through at the moment. That the rent in the city is too high. And that I can't even make the rent payment I pay now. And of course, much less any sort of increase. I could tell you that the rent goes up every single year, but my income doesn't. I worked in this country for 30 years, I am now retired, and I receive $1,200. My rent is $1,100. And of course, I need to live, I need to eat, I need other things, of course. Year after year, in every borough, we share our stories. Of course, we express all of our worries, but the RGB doesn't care about any of that. Every single year, they've responded with a rent increase. Of course, rent stabilization is supposed to ensure that rent continues to be something accessible to all. And not, of course, just to support owners and continue to deviate all of the monies so that owners continue to become richer every year. A rent freeze is a minimum at this point. And this board isn't even willing to consider that. Of course, the profits for owners have gone up 12%. And of course, if you're an owner in the city of New York, that means you don't need any help. However, 2.4 million tenants with rent stabilization are suffering at present. We don't receive any services. And of course, we no longer generate the same type of income. We know full well that when owners enact any type of rent increase, that money goes to line their pockets and not to any of the much-needed repairs in our buildings. But of course, the constant worry of this board is to worry about owners, who of course make a fortune on us. We have nothing, and of course, you also make sure to make good on certain investments. So of course, this year, I've opted not to share my story with the board. On the contrary, there are many tenants in this room right now who have rent stabilization here in Queens. What I would like to let you know is that I have no trust in this board. And just to let you know that this board and this entire process is a complete and utter farce. We see you, and we denounce your protection of the people that are owners in the city, and the fact that you think that that is more important than people's basic needs in the city. and the fact that you think that that is more important than people's basic needs in the city.
Por eso está- Por eso estamos aquí hoy, para decir que la junta y todo el proceso son una farsa.
And this is exactly why we are all here today, to let you know that this board and this entire process is indeed a farce.
La R G B es una farsa.
The R G B is a farce.
Ahora mis vecinos compartirán este testimonio en Bangladesh, coreano, y mandarín para todos aquí.
Now, my neighbors will also, uh, provide their own statements in Korean, uh, Bengali, y cuál es el otro?
Uh, Mandarin.
And in Mandarin as well.
Thank you, thank you. Elba, Elba Lopez, Elba, um, followed by Anwar Khadkir. Pronounced that right, I'm sorry. And Nazim Rahmar. Elba, please proceed.
Buenas noches para todos.
Good evening to all.
En este momento estoy representándome a mí misma y a mis vecinos que están aquí cerca de mí.
I am here representing my neighbors that are here with me and myself.
Vivo en Cosmopolitan, en Woodside.
I live in Cosmopolitan on Woodside.
Llevo cuarenta y cinco años viviendo en el mismo edificio.
I've been living at the same, uh, in the same building for now for forty-five years.
Con mis vecinas que viven cincuenta años y más.
With neighbors that have been there for fifty or more years.
En el cual una de mis vecinas vive en el quinto piso.
And one of my neighbors lives on the fifth floor.
Con más de setenta y cinco años de edad y no se le ha dado un apartamento en un nivel más abajo.
She is seventy-five years, seventy-five years old, and she has not been given a ground-floor apartment.
Toda, todos estos años que hemos vivido ahí nos han subido la renta. Mi trabajo, que es ser una security, es el, no me alcanza lo suficiente para una renta que me están subiendo cada año.
Every single year, they've increased, uh, the rent. I work as a security guard, and my income does not allow me to pay the rent, let alone an increase every single year.
Del cual los apartamentos no son adaptables para buena vivienda, son muy pequeños. Además, tienen cucarachas, ratones, hormigas, y muchos animales que son indeseables.
Of course, uh, these apartments are, these units are too small to be able to, uh, be adaptable so that we can adapt them to our living styles. Aside from that, we have roaches, we have vermin, we, we have ants and other undesirable animals.
Recientemente tuve un accidente en el, en el apartamento. El, si, el techo cayó sobre encima del televisor en la sala, me dañó muchas cosas. Lo primero que hicieron ellos fue cobrarme la renta. Les pedí que, por favor, con los daños que se hicieron en la sala, las cosas que se dañaron, que me permitieran un mes de renta que no pagada y no les importó. Todavía me siguen mandando cartas que tengo que seguir pagando la renta como ni-
Recently, there was an accident in the apartment where the ceiling caved in on the TV in the living room, and it ruined the, uh, the TV. And what was the first thing that they did? They charged me the rent. I asked them to provide me at least a month's time so that I could gather the money to pay the rent, and they continued to pay, charge me the rent.
Los pisos no, están demasiado viejos. Si nosotros pedimos que nos cambien el piso, no, no los cambian, porque ellos lo que quieren es que nosotros salgamos del apartamento para arreglarlos, adaptarlos más pequeños, muy elegantes, muy bonitos, para subir la renta el triple de lo que nosotros pagamos.
Of course, our floors, our floors are creaking and they're old, and if we ask them to repair those floors, they won't do that, of course, because what they wanna do is have a sleeve so that they can repair these apartments, adapt them so they can have more tenants in them, and raise the rent triple the costs.
Y yo amable, y yo amablemente le pido a ustedes que estén ahí sentados, que nos escuchen, que, por favor, se pongan la mano en el corazón y que nos apoyen y que nos den una fuerza y una esperanza para que la renta no sea subida, que se mantenga en un nivel para nuestra sociedad, que podemos trabajar poquito y ganar poquito para pagar una renta normal.
I kindly ask all of you there, sitting at this desk, to please put your hands on your hearts and conscience and think about this, and please make sure that the rent is stable so that we can continue making our rent payments, so that with the very little money that we make, we can actually pay our rent.
Agradezco a ustedes que están sentados ahí, que nos están escuchando.
I do appreciate that you're all sitting there and listening to us, I thank you for that.
Gracias para todos por el apoyo.
Thanks to all of you for your support.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, Em, Em Anwar Khadkir, did I pronounce that right, sir?
Dan Sharper, that is the perpetrator, state of development, went outside the train.
Okay, so we'll, we'll come back to, um, and is that the same for, uh, Nazneen Rahman, also out? Or is Nazneen here? Maybe out also. Kristen Kay, followed by Matav Khan, followed by David Garber. Kristen Kay. Let's go, Kristen.
Hello, can you hear me? I'm Kristen, I'm also an organizer with the Party for Socialism and Liberation. I anticipate that in a couple of weeks, when Mr. Erlich and Ms. Smith, who represent the owner interests on the board, inevitably vote for rent increases, they will soon tell us condescendingly that we don't understand enough, that we are too stupid, and that our demand for a rent increase is unrealistic. Let's, they'll talk about operating costs, inflation, fair returns, market realities, but let's talk about what is actually unrealistic. The idea that any of us, working New Yorkers, can withstand any additional rent increase. Here's the reality from your own twenty-twenty-five annual report. Forty-three percent of rent-stabilized tenants are rent burdened. Renter income dropped in Queens by three percent last year. And in Queens, landlords, meanwhile, saw profits jump eleven percent, more than eleven percent, averaging three hundred thousand dollars annually after expenses. Tenant's median income is sixty thousand dollars a year. So what's truly unrealistic? Forcing working-class New Yorkers to absorb yet another rent hike. Forcing people out of their homes. Forcing parents to choose between feeding their kids and paying their rent. They might talk about market realities, but let's look at the realities shaped by policies that favor owner interests. Four-twenty-one A gave landlords, billion, or developers, billions of dollars in tax breaks, and it failed to deliver the affordable housing that we need. It left behind affordable units that require six-figure incomes. Vacancy decontrol let landlords push tenants out and jack up our rents. We lost hundreds of thousands of affordable units. Displacement became policy, gentrification skyrocketed. So in this, in this board, year after year, sides with landlords, not tenants. So when the Guidelines Board says that a rent freeze is unrealistic, ask, is it more unrealistic than a system that puts profit over basic housing rights? The Rent Guidelines Board can't bullshit us. We know our solutions are rooted in reality and justice. It is realistic to cap our rents, to restore lost stabilized units, to enforce tenant protections, to end racist rezonings, and to stop back-room deals with developers. It is realistic to treat housing as a human right, not a profit engine.
Thank you.
We, the tenants, are not the ones who are out of touch with reality. We make this city run, and we demand real solutions to the housing crisis.
Thank you. I just wanna let everybody know, if you wanna register and you haven't, please do so, because after eight o'clock, we will not do more registrations. We do have many more speakers, and we wanna hear from everybody.
Les queremos dejar una vez, eh, saber una vez más que tienen hasta las ocho de la noche para apuntarse para declarar. Tenemos muchos declarantes acá que labran brevemente, pero solo les quedan unos once minutos para apuntarse. Gracias.
Matav Khan. David Garber. And Douglas Ossling. Matam?
No, I'm David.
You're David.
Yes.
Is Matam not here? Just wanna make sure. We'll come back to him if he comes in. David Garber, please proceed, sir.
Hi, I just wanna say that, um, I'm in a rent-stabilized apartment for twenty years, and of course, there's no repairs. We know that people are moving and whatever, and I must say, like, two weeks ago, I'm, I live in Sunnyside, and it was about two o'clock in the morning, I happened to be up, and I smelled the smoke on the third floor, I'm on the fourth floor. Knock on the door, no one answers. There was a big fire in Sunnyside, as many people know, many years ago. So, you know, I knock on the door, no answer, I call the fire department. My super lives in the next building, and of course, the firefighters came, they knocked on the door, I don't know, they opened it up. Well, the super was there, and he says to me, "Why didn't you call me first?" "What?" And I was speechless. If I, what was I gonna do? Go ring on his, 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 his door in, in the next building? I mean, a fire could happen, I couldn't believe it. Now, I found out to people that, you know, the landlord has to pay for this, so what? The building should go down, or they don't give a fuck about the building? But I decided to leave it alone because my husband was like, just, you know, whatever it is. I don't know if that's his fear. And then I come here, and I know that this whole thing is a sham. All right, I dealt with that shit two weeks ago. I come, please, please, please keep the clapping down, because I'm gonna say what I have to say right now. The third man on the left, you show no interest in us. Okay, shame. The three Caucasian men here, but I guess you don't give a fuck about us because the whole thing is a sham, but you know what? You could put up appearances, maybe you guys have money, maybe because you work for the landlords, but you could have a little compassion, or just don't be there.
Thank you. Douglas Ossling, Douglas Ossling. Did you have a good non-balance? Yu Yi Chan. Kyung Hee Yun. Douglas? I don't see, yeah, I don't see Doug, um, that's going to Yu Yi Chan? Yu Yi? No. Kang Hee Young? Kang Hee Yun? All right. Kyung Hee Lee? Ma'am, ma'am, are you, I'm sorry, you are?
She sent me to the podium.
Just wait a minute, I'm sorry, your name, ma'am?
Apena, Apena.
Um, I don't think you were on, did you sign up, ma'am?
Yes, I did, it's outside. I did, talked to your colleagues outside. I'm right here.
We, we wanna make sure everybody gets to speak, and we wanna make sure we're fair to everybody.
Queremos asegurarnos que todo el mundo hable y también queremos ser justos.
I understand, I'll keep it short and simple.
I can't hear you, ma'am.
I'll keep it short and simple. Um, good evening, everybody.
What is your name, ma'am? What is your name?
I said it for the hundredth time, Apena.
Hena?
Apena. A P E N A, it's very simple. It's outside, I just signed up.
You did sign up?
Yes.
All right, go, please.
But I'll keep it, I'll keep it simple.
I would ask everybody, we wanna let everybody speak.
And I just said to you, I'll keep it simple.
And we wanna ask people to follow, because otherwise, people will not get their opportunity. We wanna be very fair to everybody.
Queremos ser justos y dejar que todo el mundo hable, de lo contrario, no estamos siendo justos.
All right, so-
So please, ma'am, proceed, please.
Okay, like I said, the name is Apena, good evening to my fellow tenants. So, in essence, when it comes to housing, I think it's just a human right. We all, we all deserve a decent respectable place to live. And it turns out that even before I retired, I worked, I had a very good city job, and even at that, living in an affordable apartment, I really couldn't afford it because it was close to two thousand dollars, right here in New York City, Queens, New York. New York City is a very beautiful city. It offers so much, I would hate to go anywhere else. But even being retired, I find that the struggle is even harder because everything just continues to be high. We all want a nice place to live. It shouldn't be a select few of people that have that privilege to live in luxury. And it's so pitiful, when you drive around Queens, Brooklyn, you find all these high-rise buildings that are literally empty. Why is that? Because you have greedy slam-dog landlords that don't want to give affordable housing to people like you and me. All right? So, if you really wanna take things into consideration, if you have any sense of decency and humanity, you really should look for the interests of people that keep the city going, which is elderly people like us, that have paid our dues or pay taxes, young people that have three young children that are doing the right thing, but they can't afford New York, right? Because the rent is so damn high. I'm sure most of you are parents, and maybe you have endowments for your children. Not, not all of us can afford that, right? So I say this to say that, please, for once, have a conscience. Um, do things right by people, by the faces that you see here. We're fighting for ninety million New Yorkers that live here, right? Give us a fair, a fair, a fair, a fair chance in life to succeed. Let us have some kind of, um, quality of life and enjoy to live in this city, all right?
Thank you, ma'am. I, I wanna, um, go back to see if, uh, Kwong Hee Yun is here.
All right.
Hold on, hold on, ma'am?
Yes, those are all, all the rest of the names that are registered to speak are names from our tenants here. We've decided to do a collective shared testimony, so we're gonna start doing that now.
Okay, okay.
So, every year, we have tenants in every borough coming up to testify about the financial hardship that's faced by all tenants in rent-regulated housing. We have people coming up to testify about the explosion of evictions and homelessness. This year too, we heard a lot of moving testimonies from people in this room about the hardship that they are facing, and yet, we know that none of this matters to the board. We know that this year, this board has said, again, for the fourth consecutive time, that they're gonna raise the rent for more than two million rent-stabilized tenants. So this year, now, we are done testifying. We know that our testimonies are not changing anything. We know that you all have already made your decision. You are all here pretending to listen to us, because you have to be. So now, we will be going in order, we will be reading a single shared testimony, not to the board, but to everyone else in this room. Rather than telling the board how much we're suffering, only to see them bored, distracted, sleeping, completely unmoved, we are here to take a shared stand and a vote of no confidence in this board. After all, why should these people, this board, who we didn't even elect, who has no idea what it's like to struggle to make rent, who at best have no stake in this at all, choose how much our rent should go up, that our rent should go up, year after year after year? We know that what we really need is a true system of rent control, and this is a sham. So we're here to stand together against this undemocratic and unjust system. Let's tell the board, let's tell each other, we have no confidence in this system, and we need a new one. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Now, I'm gonna invite all of the tenants here to come up and speak one by one and share our testimony to the board. To everyone in this room.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Orlando Henao, I live at, uh, Influchin, in a rent-stabilized, uh, buil, uh, building. I could tell you about the hardship I'm facing, that the rent in the city is too high, and that I can't even afford the rent that I'm pay, that I'm paying now, let alone another increase. I could tell you that the rent increases every year and my income doesn't. Year after year, in every borough, we share our- Year after year, in every borough, we share our stories. We express our concerns. The rent guidelines board doesn't care. They have responded, year after year, with a rent increase.
Shame! Shame!
Rent stabilization is meant to ensure housing remains affordable, not to protect the profits in the pockets of the landlords and continue to siphon wealth from the working class to the rich.
That's right!
A rent freeze is the bare minimum that we need, and this board is not even willing to consider it.
It's a shame.
Landlord profits are up to 12%. It's common sense that owning property in New York City means that you don't need help.
That's right.
Meanwhile, 2.4 million rent-stabilized tenants are suffering. We are not getting any new services, and we are not getting paid anymore. We know that when landlords raise the rent, it goes straight to lining their pockets, not to fixing up our homes.
That ain't right!
But the board's main concern is still for the landlords that are making a lot of money. We have nothing, and they are worried about protecting some investment.
Shame!
So this year, I will choose not to share my stories with the board. Instead, I join others in this room, the rent-stabilized tenants of Queens, to declare my loss of confidence in the RGB and declare that this board and this process is a sham.
It's a sham!
We see and condemn your willingness to protect landlord interests over preserving the quality of life of New Yorkers. That's why we are here to say that the board and the whole process is a sham.
That's right!
The RGB is a sham.
That's right! Let's... RGB is a sham! We are getting scammed! RGB is a sham! We are getting scammed! RGB is a sham! We are getting scammed! RGB is a sham! We are getting scammed!
Thank you, sir.
So let's keep united and fight for our lives or housing.
That's right!
I would ask, I would ask, sir, please wait one second, please. Many of your neighbors have signed up dutifully to speak. And I really would ask that you give them the respect of allowing them to do so. By not giving your neighbors the chance, so I'd like to call Carlos Ortiz.
Damas y caballeros, les pedimos que por favor esperen que sus...
Carlos Ortiz?
Que sus vecinos puedan declarar, muchos de ellos están acá, se han apuntado, y les debemos ese derecho.
Carlos Ortiz, please?
Yeah, that's me.
Are you Carlos Ortiz?
Yes.
Okay. You are welcome to speak, sir.
But we are gonna do this our way, not the way you tell us to do it. So Sandra's gonna read to you in Spanish, and you're gonna try to pretend to pay some attention, even though it's not your language, right? Sandra, adelante.
Buenas noches a todos.
Good evening, everyone.
Me llamo Sandra, y vivo en Sunnyside. Yo no vivo en un edificio de renta controlada, yo vivo en una casa que es peor. Es una casa privada donde nos suben del 30 al 50% cada año. Un momento, señora. Yo, usted lo tiene escrito? Me permite? Soy la traductora. Oh, so my name is Sandra? Okay, and I live in a building that's rent stabil... Well, I actually live in a house, it's a little bit different. And le están aumentando 30% del alquiler. They're raising our rent 30 to 50%. Toma. Una pregunta. Ustedes saben cuándo fue la última vez que nos aumentaron el sueldo? I have a question. Do you know when was the last time our income went up? Podría contarles las dificultades que estoy atravesando. I can tell you all the difficulties that I'm experiencing. Que la renta en esta ciudad es demasiado alta, y que ni siquiera puedo pagar. Rent in this city is too high, and I can't even pay it. La renta que pago ahora, y mucho menos, otro aumento. I can't pay the rent that I pay now, and definitely not an increase to it. Podría decirles que la renta aumenta cada año, y mis ingresos no. I can definitely tell you, my rent increases every year, but my income does not. Año tras año, en cada distrito, compartimos nuestras historias. Year after year, in every borough, we share our stories. Expresamos nuestras preocupaciones a la junta de la regulación de renta. We tell the RGB our complaints and our situations, and you don't care. Han respondido año tras año con un aumento de renta. And year after year, your response is an increase in the rent. La estabilización de rentas tiene como objetivo garantizar... Your purpose is to guarantee? Que la vivienda siga siendo asequible. Is for housing to continue to be affordable. No proteger a las ganancias de los propietarios. It's not to protect the landlord's profits. Y seguir desdando la riqueza de la clase trabajadora. And keep deviating like the riches of like the working class, or the money of the working class. Hacia los ricos. To the rich. Una colección de rentas es congelación de rentas, es lo mínimo que necesitamos. The minimum thing we need now is a rent freeze. Esta junta ni siquiera está dispuesta a considerarlo. This board is not even willing to take it into consideration. Las ganancias de los propietarios han aumentado un 12%. The landlord's profits have increased by 12%. Es lógico que ser propietario en la ciudad de Nueva York significa que no necesitas ayuda. It's clear that to be a landlord in the city of New York, you don't really need help. Nosotros sí, la comunidad. But we do, the community does. Mientras tanto, 2.4 millones de inquilinos con renta estabilizada están sufriendo. Meanwhile, 2.4 million tenants in rent-stabilized apartments are suffering. No recibimos ningún servicio. We don't receive any type of service, or services. Ningún servicio nuevo, y no generamos los mismos ingresos. And we don't make the same income. Sabemos que cuando los propietarios suben la renta, el dinero se destina directamente a llenarle los bolsillos, ni siquiera repanan los apartamentos. We know that when the landlords get their money, their rent, basically, it just goes straight to their pockets. It's not even used to make repairs. Pero la principal preocupación de la junta sigue siendo de los propietarios que ganan un dineral. But the main concern of the board is for the landlords to continue making profit. No tenemos nada. We don't have anything. Ni les preocupa ustedes protegernos. And you don't even care to protect us. Así este año optaré por no compartir mis historias con la junta. So this year, I have chosen to not share my story with the board. En cambio, me uno a otros en esta sala. But I unite with other people that are in this room. Los inquilinos con renta estabilizada de Queens para declarar... With the tenants of rent-stabilized apartments in Queens, in order to express? Mi pérdida de confianza en ustedes. My lack of trust or confidence in you all. En la RGB. Lack of confidence in the RGB. Y declara que esta junta y este proceso son una farsa. And to state that this board and this process is a farce. Vemos y condenamos su disposición a proteger a los intereses de los propietarios. We see and we condemn your interest in protecting landlords. Por encima de preservar la calidad de vida de los newyorkinos. Instead of protecting New Yorkers' quality of life. Por favor, escuchen y tomen conciencia. Please listen to us and take us into consideration. Good night.
Thank you.
Gracias.
I believe that M. Anwar Khan Kier is back in the room, I've been told?
Yes.
Please. Mr. Khan Kier, please come up. I think we'll have a translation, sir. Thank you, thank you.
Basically, I'm a Bengali spoken person. So, instead of English, I'm trying to read my testimony in Bengali. Amannam, M. Anwar Khan Dakar, amit thakki, Jamaica, Zara Building, Ekti Building.
My name is Anwar M. Khan Dakar. I live in Jamaica at a Zara building. Amar building ti ekti rent stabilized bhavane thakki. Ami apnader boltte pari, amar jivone kiki shankarchol chhe, ei shahore bharar har kotra beshi, ebon, ami akon je poriman bharadichhi, ta dewa amar pukhe sombhab nay. I could tell you about the hardships I'm facing, that the rent in the city is too high, and that I can't even afford the rent that I'm paying now, let alone another increase. Ar barte bharat to osumbhab. Ami boltte pari, poti bachore bharabare, kintu amar aye bare na. So I could tell you that the rent increases every year, and my income does not. Bachore par bachore, potiti borote, amra amader galpo share kuri. Years after year, in every borough, we share our stories. Amra amader udvek prokas kuri, kintu rent stabilization, or, sorry, rent guidelines board, kichui bhaave na amader janno. So we express our concerns, years after years, but the rent guidelines board does not care. Tara poti bachore, ekki kach kore, bharabare. Bharaniyantrner mool uddecholo, amar abashon ke shabar janno shulo rakhha. Badiyala der munafa rokhha kora nay, karmo jibis seni theke, dhonik senir pockete sampo saranthor kora nay. Bharasthi rakhha, rent freeze. Amader nunotom chaheeda, athoch ei board, sheeta bivetchanai nithio prustut nay. Well, the board have responded, years after year, but with a rent increase. Rent stabilization is meant to ensure housing remains affordable, not to protect the profits in the pockets of landlords and to continue the siphon wealth from the working class to the rich. Badiyala der lab, bardo percent bedeche. New York City moto jaigay, badi malik hua manee, hollo apni artik shahata prajan, emon obosthay nay, eta sadhan buddhir vishay. So a rent freeze is the bare minimum that we need, and this board is not even willing to consider it. Landlord's profits are up to 12%. It is a common sense that owning property in New York City means that you do not need help. Chobis lak bharaniyantrito, rent stabilized, bharatiya durbhge achen, amra kuno nutun porisheba pachchi na, amader ayo barche na. Amra jani, jokon badiyala ra, bharabare, shei taka jae sorashri tader munafae, amader badi thik karar kaje nay. So meanwhile, 2.4 million rent-stabilized tenants are suffering. We are not getting any new services, and we are not getting paid anymore. We know that when landlords raise their rent, it goes straight to lining their pockets, not to fixing up our homes. Tobwo ei boarder mool chinta thake, shei badiyala der niyei, jarra itomoddei onek taka kamache, amader kichui nay, ar tara binyog rokhha karar chintae vasto. To my understanding, it is clear that the board's main concern is still for the landlords that are making lots of lots of money. We have nothing, we, the tenants, have nothing, and they are worried about protecting some investments. Ta ei bachore, amar koste galpo RGBer kache, ar share kurbuna borong, ami ei kokhe upushtit unnanno deshange, Queenser bharaniyantrito, bharatiyade shange, ekotritu hue ghoshna kuchhi, ami RGBer uportheke astha hariye chi, ebon ei boarder pokriya somprunrope bhondami. Amra apnader spostre bhaave dekchi, ebon nindakuchhi, apnara badiyala der shathro rokhha korte prustut, athoch New York basider jivone er man rokhha korte nay. Ei karuni, aaj amra ekhene eschi, eta bolar janno, ei board ar puro pokriya ekta bhondami, RGB ekti protarona. So this year, I will choose not to share my stories with the board anymore. Instead, I join others, other tenants in this room, the rent-stabilized tenants of Queens, to declare my loss of confidence in the RGB. And I declare that this board and this process is a sham. We see and condemn your willingness to protect landlord interests over preserving the quality of life of New Yorkers. That is why we're here today to say that the board and the whole process is a sham. RGB is a sham!
RGB is a sham!
Inaka Harara? Let's, please. Inaka Harara, are you Inaka?
Wait. Testing. Ah, I'm called Du Ji Cheng. Ah, live in Queens, ah, live in Huanghou District, a stable apartment. Ah, but this city's rent is really too high. I can't even afford the current rent. And even more, now they're raising the rent. I want you to know is, the rent is rising every year, and my own income is almost the same.
My name is Du Ji Cheng, and I live at Flushing, Queens, in a rent-stabilized building. I could tell you about the hardships I'm facing, that the rent in the city is too high, and I can't even afford the rent I'm paying now, let alone another increase. I could tell you that the rent increases every year, and my income does not.
Ah, year after year, in every district, we're telling the same story, expressing our worries. But the rent stability committee doesn't care. Every year, they're responding to the same comment.
Year after year, in every borough, we share our stories, we express our concerns. The rent guideline board does not care. They have responded year after year with a rent increase.
Rent stabilization's purpose is to ensure the rent is affordable, not to protect the profits in the pockets of landlords, and continue to siphon wealth from the working classes to the rich.
A rent freeze is the bare minimum that we need, and this board is not even willing to consider it.
The rent is increasing 12%. In New York City, having a property means you don't need to work, or use other income. It's a常识.
Landlord profits are up to 12%. It's common sense that owning property in New York City means that you do not need help.
The rent is increasing 12%. In New York City, having a property means you don't need to work, or use other income.
Landlord profits are up to 12%. It's common sense that owning property in New York City means that you do not need help.
Two hundred forty thousand稳定的住户 are suffering. Our accommodation conditions are almost the same. And we don't get any higher salary. But we know, when the rent rises, the money is transferred to their pockets, and not to improve our accommodation.
Meanwhile, 2.5 million rent-stabilized tenants are suffering, while not getting any new services, while not getting paid anymore. We know that when landlords raise the rent, it goes straight to lining their pockets, not to fix our home.
Unfortunately, the rent committee cares the most about the big money earners, and we are the least. And they're worried about their property's protection.
Ironically, the board, the main concern for them, is still the landlord that are making more monies. We have nothing, and they are still worried about protecting their rights and their investments.
Therefore, this year, I won't share my story with the committee. On the contrary, I want to share with the others, and with Huanghou District, who owns the apartment.
So this year, I will choose not to share my stories with the board. Instead, I join others in this room, the rent-stabilized tenants of Queens, to declare my loss of confidence in the RGB, and declare that this board and this process is a sham. We see and condemn your willingness to protect landlord interests over preserving the quality of the life of New Yorkers. This is why we are here, to say that the board and the whole process is a sham. The RGB is a sham.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Anthony Edwara? Anthony Edwara?
This board has increased the rents every year since it came together.
Are you Anthony?
There will no longer be tenants who can afford to live in rent-stabilized apartments if this board and administration continue to raise rents like this. Or maybe that's what they want. Today, the NY Apartments Association, which is made up of owners of rent-stabilized buildings, just announced that they are going to spend $2.5 million to try to get Cuomo elected. They claim they have no money to do repairs, but have now become the single biggest donors in the major race, just so they can keep getting higher rent increases. Coincidentally, it seems, this board, those people sitting up there, have been helping them realize the same purpose. In the name of law, every year, the board analyzes landlord costs and every year ignores tenant costs. Why? Because that is all that is required of them by the law. Every year, the board hosts hearings in every borough. Why? Not to listen to tenants. But again, because it is required of them by the law. It is a farce, and we all know it by now. In the history of the RGB, no matter the data, no matter the circumstances, the result is always the same. Operating income is down, rent increase. Operating income is up, rent increase. Insurance costs are low, rent increase. Insurance costs are high, rent increase. Vacancies are up, rent increase. Vacancies are down, rent increase. In fact, rents in NYC have gone up 200% more than operations costs since the RGB was established. In the same time period, the real minimum wage has decreased by nearly half. If the RGB was actually made to preserve affordability, tenants would be looking at rents rollbacks, not increases. Our demand for a rent freeze is the bare minimum. And that's why we're here today, to say that the board and the whole process is a sham. You will go back to your non-rent stabilized housing tonight, complain about your boring prestigious duty of sitting through another hearing, but know that, carry this feeling with you, that we are, the tenants are rising up. And know that we are shutting you down. And the big landlords and real estate land developers behind you, everything you are standing on.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Jorge, Jorge? Jorge Villalobos?
Anthony is gonna speak.
So we're gonna have the same shared testimony in alternating languages. You called Anthony before, and he will speak now, thank you.
Anthony, thank you, sir.
Okay, alright. Hello, everyone. My name is Anthony, and I live at Richmond Hill, in a rent-stabilized building. I could tell you about the hardships I'm facing, that my father is facing. That the rent in the city is too high, and that I can't even afford rent that I'm paying now, let alone another increase. I could tell you that the rent increases every year, and my income does not, nor does my father's.
我叫Jorge Villalobos, and I live in the 94th and 25th of the 57th Avenue, in an apartment of rent stabilization in Queens. I could tell you about the difficulties that I'm going through. That the rent in this city is too high, and I can't even afford the rent that I pay right now. And even less in another apartment. I could tell you that the rent increases every year, and my income does not, nor does my father's.
Hello, my name is Yoon Kyung. I'm a resident of Flushing, a permanent resident of the city. I can tell you about the difficulties I'm experiencing. I can tell you about the pressure of high rent, and the negative impact of the rent. Rent rises, but my income doesn't rise. Every year, residents of each district are complaining about this. I express my concerns. However, the RGB doesn't listen to the guidance of the city. The city has responded to the negative impact of the city. It's to maintain the low rent for residents, and to protect the income of residents, not to force the workers to pay for the benefits of the city. The city's guidance is the least necessary measure. However, the city doesn't have the intention of considering this. The income of residents has increased 12%. It's a habit for residents to possess real estate in New York City. On the other hand, the 2400,000 residents who benefit from the city's financial benefits are experiencing difficulties. Even if the residents think of the city's benefits, the money comes from their pockets. We know that the money comes from our houses. Rather than the financial benefits of the city, we are promoting the phenomenon of low rent for residents. We are promoting the phenomenon of low rent for residents. However, the biggest concern of the city is the residents who are still earning a lot of money. We don't have anything, and we are worried about how to protect some of the city's assets. That's why I didn't want to share my personal story. Instead, I invited the residents of the city, including the resident citizens of the city, to trust the RGB. I am warning the city's guidance and the city's policy. Rather than preserving the lives of residents, I am warning the citizens of New York City to resist the intention of the citizens. RGB is a scam.
房东的利润增长了12%。
Alright.
Year after year, in every borough, we share our stories, we express our concerns. The Rent Guidelines Board doesn't care. They have responded year after year with a rent increase. Rent stabilization is meant to ensure housing remains affordable, not to protect the profits in the pockets of landlords and continue to siphon wealth from the working class to the rich. A rent freeze is the bare minimum that we need. And this board is not even willing to consider it. Landlord's profits are up 12%. It's common sense that owning property in New York City means that you do not need help. Meanwhile, 2.4 million rent-stabilized tenants are suffering. We're not getting any new services, and we're not getting paid anymore. We know that when landlords raise the rent, it goes straight to lining their pockets, not to fixing up our homes. But the board's, but the board's main concern is still for the landlords that are making lots of money. We have nothing, and they're worried about protecting some investments? So this year, I will choose not to share my stories with the board. Instead, I choose to join the others in this room, the rent-stabilized tenants of Queens, to declare my loss of confidence in the RGB and declare that this board and this process is a sham. We see and condemn your willingness to protect landlord interests over preserving the quality of life of New Yorkers. That's why we're here today, to say that the board and the whole process is a sham. The RGB is a sham.
The Rent Guidelines Board is a threat to the people. When rents rise, homelessness rises. And when homelessness rises, what does the city do? It criminalizes it. Sleeping on a train, you're arrested. Seeking shelter in a park, harassed by the cops, unable to pay rent, evicted, then funneled into a system designed to punish poverty with imprisonment. Good, I want to make sure you're all looking at me. In New York, homelessness grew over 50% from January 2023 to January 2024. That is more than four times the rest of the nation. We saw a 23% spike in evictions in the city. And these aren't just numbers. These are our neighbors, our friends, our communities being pushed to the brink because the rent keeps going up. This is me, on my way to urology this morning, seeing an eviction notice, literally today, on my door, discussing how I'm gonna take some part of my fucking bowel and turn it into a new place for me to pee out of my belly button, and then not knowing where I'm going to have surgery and recover. What do I tell the doctors? What would you do? And who is primarily being pushed out of the city, out of Queens? It's the same people who are under attack across this country. Immigrants, black and brown families, the working class. And while the Trump administration demonizes immigrants and strips away protections, while they criminalize poverty and gut social services, the Adams administration is putting a target on the backs of the very same communities by raising the rents and kicking people out of their homes. 38 human beings have died in the hellhole of Rikers, under Mayor Adams's watch. 我们什么都没有, 他们担心保护一些投资? 对不起。所以, 这一年我会选择不分享我的故事给居委会。而是, 我选择加入其他人在这个房间的其他人。在 Queens 的房东, 宣布我的怀疑, 宣布这个居委会和这个过程是一个骗局。就是为什么我们今天来这里, 宣布这个居委会和整个过程是一个骗局。R G B 是骗局。
租金 guideline board 是人民的威胁。当房租上涨, 屋宅危机上升。当住宅危机上升, 城市做什么? 它就逮捕它。睡在床上, 你被逮捕。寻求 shelter 在公园里, 被警察骚扰。不支付房租, 被驱逐, 然后被带到一个系统, 用来惩罚贫困的人, 用监禁。好, 我想确保你们都在看着我。而这不是只是数字。这是我们邻居, 我们的朋友们, 我们的社区被推到悬崖, 因为房租一直在增加。这是我今天早上去邮局, 看到一个驱逐通知, 今天在我的门口, 讨论我要把我的脏肚子的一部分拿走, 转成一个新地方让我去厕所。我告诉医生们, 你会怎么做? 你说得对。而城市主要被推离, 从 Queens 推出去。种民, 黑色和白族家庭, 工人阶级。而在特朗普 administration 的支持下, 种民被虐待, 把保护剥夺, 而在逮捕和提供社会服务的时候, 私民被逮捕。Adams administration 在推动同样的社区, 通过提高房租和推出人们到他们的房子。38个人在里克人监狱中死亡, 在 Adams 管管之下。我相信你听说过这个。这不是 separate crisis。这是同样的机器, 把贫穷和工人阶级的人, 再次, 白色, 黑色, 种民, 噪入粪土。而谁的收入? 庄主, 站在你面前的议员。代表 Doug Apple 的那些人。所有的员工, 他们失去了工作, 家庭成员生病, 或者工资没有增加, 而房租一直持续增加。够了, 够了。就是为什么我们今天来这里, 说这个过程是一个什么? 是骗局。是骗局。谢谢。
先生, 请, 先生。
是的, 德比·劳尔。
谢谢。
谢谢 Google, 我看到 rent stabilized 的定义是 rent regulation 系统, 租金的增加是按一个 percentage 定义的 rent guideline board。这保护房东免于房租上涨, 通常包括 renew 他们的租期。好吧, 我们不觉得安全。租金 guideline board 成员和 mayor Eric Adams, 你 appointed 的。我对纽约的热情在减弱, 因为房价降到了低, 中等和中等收入的 earners。租金, 医疗, 食物, 网络, 便利, 交通费用, 如衣物, 都在增加和 skyrocketing。新 York 已经有一个无法控制的住房危机。什么遗憾。这个 reverse Robin Hood, 增长, 增长房租, 为了富穷人, 是耻辱, 耻辱。包括重复的 M C I 支付, 对于资本改进, 也增加, 那也增加房租。所以, 房主签了租期协议, 然后 M C I 支付增加了。上帝在天上, 请上帝指引你做出这个决定, 关于增加房租。我祈祷, 我祈祷, 你们都有些觉悟, 你们住的地方, 比我们住的地方, 和我们付的钱。我希望, 最重要的是, 你的觉悟将是你的引导, 当你今晚自己在镜子上看, 做出这个决定。
你好, 我是韩国裔李敬义。我住在 El Moste, 住进安正化的居民。我可以告诉你, 我面临的困难。租金是正确的, 我的收入不是这样的。每年, 各社区的居民都表示这样的抗议。我们表示我们的忧虑。但是, R G B 不听。每年, 以影响, 影响回答。住进安定的住房, 为了维持房价便宜, 而是保护房东的收入, 保护劳动阶级的部, 继续往下跌。住进的合同, 是我们最需要的措施。但是, 这个委员会也不支持这一点。新 York 城市, 如果拥有不动产, 无需帮助, 是习俗。一方面, 安定的居民, 240万名居民, 面临困难。新的服务只是, 房主如果认为住进, 那些钱是自己储蓄的地方, 不是, 我们知道, 我们知道。住进的制度和安定, 新 York 城市的住房不足现象, 促进房东和开发商的储蓄, 使住房活动活跃。但是, 这个委员会最大的关注是, 仍然赚很多钱的房东。我们什么都没有, 这个委员会, 一些, 一些投资应该保护, 怕, 怕。所以, 我不想分享我的个人故事。[Inaudible] [Inaudible] 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 [Applause]
We want to make sure everybody gets to speak, so we please would ask that you try to keep yourselves to two minutes approximately if you can, ma'am.
[Inaudible]
Buenas tardes. Me llamo Alicia Tuque y vivo en la 9425 en un edificio con renta estabilizada en Queens. Podría contarles las dificultades que estoy atravesando de la renta en esta ciudad. Es demasiada alta y que no siquiera puedo pagar la renta que pago ahora, y mucho menos otro aumento. Podría decirles que la renta aumenta cada año y mis ingresos no. Año tras año, en cada distrito, compartimos nuestras historias, expresaremos nuestras preocupaciones a la junta de regulación de renta. No le importa, han respetado año tras año, con un aumento de renta, las estabilizaciones de renta tiene como objetivo garantizar que la vivienda sigue siendo accedido como proteger las ganancias de los propietarios y seguir desviando la riqueza de la clase trabajadora. Hacia los ricos una congelación de renta es lo mínimo que necesitamos, y esta junta ni siquiera está dispuesta a considerarla. Las ganancias de los propietarios han aumentado un doce por ciento. Es lógico que ser propietario es la ciudad en Nueva York, siguiendo que nos necesitamos ayuda. Mientras tanto, el dos punto cuatro por ciento de inquilinos con renta estabilizada está sufriendo. No recibimos ningún servicio nuevo y ya no sabemos que cuando los propietarios suben la renta, el dinero se destina directamente a llenarse los bolsillos, a no reparar nuestras casas. Pero la principal preocupación de la junta sigue siendo la de los propietarios que ganan un dineral. No tenemos nada y le preocupa proteger algunas inversiones. Así que este año optaré por no compartir mis historias con la junta. En cambio, me uno a otro en esta sala, los inquilinos con renta estabilizada de Queens para declarar mi pérdida de confianza en la RGB y declarar que esta junta y este propósito son una falsa. Vamos y condenaremos su posición a proteger los intereses de los propietarios por encima de preservar la calidad de vida de los neoyorkinos. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Wanda Martinez and I live at 9416 34th Road in Jackson Heights. I could tell you about hardships I'm facing and that the rent in the city is too high and that I can't afford the rent that I'm paying now, let alone another increase. I could tell you that the rent increases every year and that my income does not. Year after year, in every borough, we share our stories, we express our concerns. The Rent Guideline Board doesn't care. They have responded year after year with a rent increase. Rent stabilization is meant to ensure housing remains affordable, not to protect the profits in the pockets of the landlords and continue to siphon the wealth from the working class to the rich. A rent freeze is the bare minimum that we need, and this board is not even willing to consider it. Landlord profits are up twelve percent. It's common sense that owning property in New York City means that you do not need help. Meanwhile, 2.4 million rent-stabilized tenants are suffering. We're not getting any new services, we're not getting paid anymore. We know that when landlords raise the rent, it goes straight to lining their pockets and not to fixing up our homes. But the board's main concern is still for the landlords that are making lots of money. We have nothing and they're worried about protecting some investments? So this year, I will choose not to share my story even though I came with it and join others in this room, rent-stabilized tenants of Queens, to declare my loss of confidence in the RGB and to declare that this board and its process is a sham. We see and condemn your willingness to protect landlord interests over preserving the quality of life of New Yorkers. That is why we're here today, to say that the board and the whole process is a sham. The RGB is a sham. Housing is a human right. Fight, fight, fight! Housing is a human right. Fight, fight, fight! Housing is a human right. Fight, fight, fight! Housing is a human right. Fight, fight, fight!
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Any other speakers who have signed up, please, sir?
Mi nombre es José López.
My name is José López.
Y vivo en los edificios de la Mesa Verde de renta estabilizada en Queens.
And I live in the Mesa Verde buildings in Queens.
Contarle a ustedes las dificultades que tenemos para que la renta sea incrementada, pero yo creo que ustedes lo saben a conciencia, la diferencia de salarios que hay. Ustedes incrementan en una proporción muy alta y los salarios no tienen ese mismo incremento.
We're telling you how difficult it is for us to pay what we have to pay, and they know it because we can barely afford rent and he's tired of everything.
Y en Nueva York, todos tenemos derechos a una vivienda segura, habitable, y sanitaria.
And in New York, we all have the right to live in dignified housing, a clean and affordable housing.
Esto significa que el propietario debe asegurarse de que el edificio esté libre de plagas, fugas, mo, y que cuente con servicios esenciales como la calefacción, el agua caliente, la fría, y la electricidad.
That means that the owner of the building has to make the repairs that the building needs, has to provide heating, has to provide water, has to provide all the things that they need, and they are already paying for that.
Esto quiere decir que hay unas, unos responsabilidades y unos derechos tanto de inquilinos como de los propietarios.
This means that there's a responsibility from the landlords to do what's right.
Cuando están pensando en hacer incrementos en los, en la, en las rentas, también debe pensar en el bienestar del inquilino.
When they're trying to increase rents, the first thing that they should think first is on the well-being of all the tenants.
Y la junta de regulación que tenemos aquí al frente es la encargada de velar porque los inquilinos tengan esa igualdad de derechos tanto para los propietarios como para los inquilinos.
And the RGB, the people up here, they should be in charge to make sure that every tenant is represented here, that every tenant has what like they are asking for.
Es muy importante que esta noche, los inquilinos que estamos aquí reunidos, comprometamos a la junta, que se comprometen realmente a hacer algo por los inquilinos de Nueva York para que tengamos una vivienda digna y accorable a todos los presupuestos de las personas que estamos trabajando y que estamos pagando la renta aquí en Nueva York.
And all the tenants that are here, we have to make them do what's right to make sure that every tenant in New York City should have affordable housing, should have the things that they deserve.
No hemos venido simplemente a ponerle la queja. Necesitamos el compromiso de ustedes como junta que están allá al frente de que hagan respetar los derechos de los inquilinos. Eso es lo que necesitamos en la noche de hoy, porque el año pasado vinimos, pusimos las mismas quejas y incrementaron la renta. Por favor, que tomen conciencia, que nos hagan valer los derechos porque esas juntas no le eligieron para que estén como estatuas vivientes allí, sino para que hagan valer los derechos de los inquilinos. Esa es la razón que, por la que estamos hoy aquí exigiéndoles a ustedes.
We didn't get here just to complain. We made here to make sure that they do their job, which is to say, make sure that every tenant has what they need and not just say with their faces that they don't care, that we come here year after year and they don't do nothing. We came here to make sure that we fight for what's right.
Están dispuestos ustedes que están allá al frente a luchar por los derechos de los inquilinos?
Do you compromise yourself to make sure that the tenant's interest is represented to fight for tenant rights or are you just gonna sit there and increase rents?
Contesten. Contesten. ¿O es que no tienen voz? ¿O se les acabó la voz?
[Inaudible]
Para eso están allí. ¡Hagan un compromiso!
Answer him! 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 Answer him!
Porque si no, todos los inquilinos que estamos aquí hemos perdido el tiempo. Si no hay un compromiso de ustedes, hemos perdido el tiempo y hay que buscar una elección de una junta nueva y tenemos los inquilinos que luchar para que esto se haga, porque la gente que está allí no se compromete a nada. Y mientras no haya compromiso, no hay nada. Hay que hacer valer los derechos de los inquilinos.
Because it's not, we just came to lose time and we have to elect people that actually put the interest of tenants here because otherwise they're gonna continue the same thing that they do year after year.
O simplemente están como unos payasos ahí sentados para no representar nada. ¿A qué vinimos aquí? A comprometernos. Eso es lo que vinimos aquí. Gracias.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
[Inaudible]
[Inaudible]
Ma'am, please. Please, ma'am. Thank you. Please, ma'am.
All right. If you take Woodside in the bus, we're leaving right now. Okay? If you don't go Woodside, then we'll be throwing. Okay? We're gonna get a big night.
Let's go Woodside!
[Applause]
Me llamo Dakota Rylander y vivo en Natcha, en Jamaica, en un edificio con estabiliza de renta. I could tell you about my ceiling that's peeling and has been for years. Just today, there was brown water coming out of the sink. Podría contarles las dificultades que estoy atravesando que la renta en... I need a minute. Hold on. Que la renta en esta ciudad está demasiada alta y que ni siquiera puedo pagar la renta que pago ahora, y mucho menos otro aumento. Podría decirles que la renta aumenta cada año y mis ingresos no. Año tras año, en cada distrito, compartimos nuestras historias, expresamos nuestras preocupaciones a la junta de regulación de rentas. No le importa, han respondido año tras año con un aumento de renta. La estabilización de rentas tiene como objetivo garantizar que la vivienda sigue siendo acci... ¿Accisible? As... Accisible. No, no proteger las ganancias de los pro... Propietarios y seguir desviando la riqueza de la clase trabajadora hacia los ricos. Una congelación de rentas es lo mínimo que necesitamos y esta junta ni siquiera está dispuesta a considerar... Las ganancias de los pro... Han aumentado un doce por ciento. Es lógico que ser propietario en la ciudad de Nueva York significa que no necesitas ayuda. Mientras tanto, dos... ¿Es veinticuatro o es dos? Dos punto cuatro millones de inquilinos con renta estabilizada están sufriendo. No recibimos ningún servicio nuevo. Oh, okay. Give me the English one.
Thank you, ma'am. We have, I think, two more speakers who've been waiting very patiently.
It's the least you could do. Okay, I'm almost done. I'm almost done.
Okay. Please, please, please let her finish.
We're not getting any new services and we're not getting paid anymore. We know that when landlords raise the rent, it goes straight to lining their pockets, not to fixing up our homes. But the board's main concern is still for the landlords that are making lots of money. We have nothing and they're worried about protecting some investments. So this year, I will choose not to share my stories with the board. Instead, I join others in the room, the rent-stabilized tenants of Queens, to declare my loss of confidence in the RGB and declare that this board and process is a sham. We see and condemn your willingness to protect landlord interests over preserving the quality of life of New Yorkers. That's why we're here today, to say that the board and the whole process is a sham. The RGB is a sham.
RGB is a sham! RGB is a sham!
Thank you. Thank you.
RGB is a sham! RGB is a sham!
Ma'am, thank you. Ma'am, I believe there are two people who have not spoken at all, so I would ask that you give them the opportunity to speak first.
Uh, we already have a plan and we're almost done, so just bear with me because I want to talk about my building. Sounds good? Um, good evening. My name is Rain Riley. I'm a member of the Met Council on Housing, the New York State Tenant Block, I'm a member of Caring Majority Rising, and I'm the founder of my building's tenant union. I've lived at 14016 34th Avenue in Flushing for two years now, in Queens for ten years. And due to the absurd rent hikes and unethical harassment towards my neighbors, I started the tenant union. Because my building has a hundred and fifty-five units, but half of them are just a revolving door scam. I'm here today, of course, to demand a rent freeze because I already can't afford the current rent and I'm constantly in eviction court despite repeatedly working myself back into the hospital. The stress of always being homeless while in a wheelchair is overwhelming. The accessible units are hoarded by greedy bastards like y'all who don't even use them. Is it worth it? You know, watching us die on the streets? And if it's worth it to you, what the fuck is wrong with you? My landlords do not need more money. They have twenty buildings and a mall, but they live in Long Island. I've never met them. They don't provide basic warranty of ability accommodations. They lie about stabilization status with no repercussions. They harass the older tenants and the immigrant tenants straight out of the building. They steal HRA payments and lie until forced to admit it by the court. This all happened to me too, the HRA. They lied about the fucking rent stabilization status of my unit too until the court forced them to admit it. And now they lie to the court saying that I have Section Eight while evicting me so they can keep getting more free fucking money. They actively take down any union organizing signage while retaliating fiercely against the members and have raised the rent four hundred dollars each year for long-term tenants since 2022. In just a few years, the remaining stabilized units in my building went from twenty-four to nine, and if they succeed in evicting me this month, it's gonna be eight. When the gas was out for five months in 2023, they gave each unit one hot plate, sued everybody who withheld the correct rebate amount, and then came and took the hot plates back. We know I can't even afford my Miralax. My girlfriend has to buy it for me. Each one of you board members, as I said before, holds our lives in your hands and I really need you to understand that. You may not remember us in a year, but I know for sure I'm gonna remember you. We need a rent freeze right now and we're ready, we're organized, and we're mobilized to vote the leeches out. Thank you again.
[Applause] Abolish RGB! 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 Abolish RGB!